Captain Burley. Oh, okay, everyone's not back here. We're back in the office, Captain Burley. Yes, I'd like to make a little... Yeah, what's the tale? What's the tale? Okay, I'm sorry. And I think we're all back now, so we will resume our business, continue our business here with the town of Tarboro. Captain Burley.
All right. I'd like to make a motion for a resignation of the town manager, town clerk.
Sir.
We have a motion on the floor and a second that the town manager be asked to submit his resignation. This time, I'd like to take a vote on that motion.
Let's have some discussion. Just good.
We can have a short discussion, but I'm not getting into differing, arguing back and forth. What are the statements anyone wants to make? Please have the statement and let's leave it there. Captain Taylor.
Okay. My reason for making this search over there is there's a lot of things I could go into, obviously, I didn't have any time to do it. We've had two notices, one from a gentleman who does the radio for the town of Tarboro. States that there was an upgrade that was needed in 2012. And so around this time, I tried to contact the city manager to say to him that he needs to address the aging radio equipment the town owns to go available. Meaning that the town manager did not call back to talk to him about the radio system. We also have in our possession a letter from the former town chief, who sits back here, Jay Bolton. Stating that he talked to the manager prior to his retirement concerning the radio system. And if we can all see, we're sitting here now with a $2 million principal debt. It's come up because nobody taken action, and it should have been action taken in the name of the system. We could have paid the financial arrangement for it, and we didn't. Ms. Jordan sent Mr. Thornton an email saying that she knows that if he is not, this is not available, but I can read it available. My guy said that she knew that if he knew something wrong, that she would have, he would have done something bad, contacted some council about it. He really sends his email back stating that he had no knowledge of it, and if he had some knowledge or anything of that nature, he certainly would have contacted the town council about it. And my position on that is that if he was confronted to know that we got a $2 million radio system, and one trunk's been down for some time. Such, the entire system failed when there was a shooting and everything. And the officer was unable to make a phone call, except with his cellphone. And now, all of a sudden, we got this big delta in the room, along with other things that's happening. And we're supposed to ignore it when the person who was leading the town was not taking action to protect the system and the police officer of this town? I don't see how he can come in in the morning and look anybody in the eye and say, "I'm doing a good job of the system in Tarboro."
We'll have a discussion.
I'd like some clarity. Are we talking about asking the town manager to resign, which he can politely say, "No"? Or have, while we discuss on taking a vote, what determinates this? But what is the, what is the motion? Please restate, what is the motion?
The motion is asking here, if you can, we will vote, or we have to go as far as council goes, or vote as a unit, ask for his resignation. That's what I'm asking. Meaning each one of us will vote, right? And we were saying, if this announcement's been done, then we all are asking for it. That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Mayor, that's what it was, the question was, what was the motion?
The motion is, what is the town manager doing tonight?
You made a motion.
And I've been in and put this up to the...
We all know what I'm saying, the motion is the motion that you're asking him to resign, is that what you're...
Right.
Oh, okay.
Let me get some more clarity. If he just says no right now, where is there voting? Give that the motion of asking him to resign.
I guess if the motion passes to ask him, then there's some, oh, you're going to resign him, you didn't ask him.
Don't be glutton.
I thought you finished, this is my turn.
No, sir.
I just regret my counsel that they're asking me if I'm going to submit my resignation.
Hold on one minute.
Let's make...
Yes.
You know, everybody here has a right to vote, if they want to, and should. Everybody here has said, "Fire, take him out." We give him an option, going out of this place with as clean a scale as we can go out. If he wants to sit here and continue, knowing that people, that he and his audience know what's going on in this town, that he's not hiding things from them, that's his choice. But I feel like he knows what he's said and what he's done, right? Being truthful with the citizens in the town of Tarboro.
We have a discussion.
Well, the only thing I want to clarify, you know, I've only been sitting on this board for a very limited time. So my information that I know is very limited, maybe to some point, so others may know. So, you know, some of your issues you may have, or some things that I might, as informed, maybe of you or of some of the past things. But I can only go and vote from the time I have been elected to sit on this panel until next. So I can, I have to make my judgment on what I know and name.
I'll have another discussion.
I'd just like to say, I would hope that the citizens will wait until you hear all the facts before you make your decision about what is true or not. Just because one person or one makes some statements, interprets some emails, that they think that saying one thing may not say exactly what it is. And I think we need to hear from the people involved in this whole incident before we, before we decide that. And I would like to, to say that I would not vote for that type for asking somebody a resignation unless I think there was a cause and reason to. I still think there would be a flag on his record if we did do that. So, so to me, asking him to resign is almost the same thing as trying to try to terminate him, which tarnish his reputation. But when facts are not in, you're here tonight, you hear presentation from others about this particular situation and the facts, and then I think people can make their judgment out. What goes on with social media and other people's personal opinion, some people got their own agenda, and it's a hidden agenda. It's been here ever since I've been on this council. Just withhold your judgment.
Yes, my email to Mr. Thornton, the town manager, was in regards, I wanted timeline of events leading up to the failure or dysfunction of the emergency system. This system, you know, is electronic, it could have went down with any department, not just the police department. And I asked him, who's responsible? Are there logs of there being magnets? I asked him, you know, the chain of command for, for that type of information. If it was imminent, there ain't been to the citizens in this town. I'm certain that the person responsible for keeping it magnet should have followed the chain of command. That's what I'm here to find out, who's responsible for, you know, making sure that that information, if there was an issue and the imminent danger to the citizens in this town, who was responsible for relaying that information and how it's supposed to be responsible, I mean relayed. And if there was a report, I want to see the report. Somebody has to sign off on things that are maintenance and taken care of in this town, whether it be the police department, fire department, or the water department or what have you. Somebody needs to be signed off on information. We have several departments here, and Mr. Thornton meets with them on a regular basis. And so this issue didn't come up until there was a shooting. I have a concept. I have managed a large company before, had a million dollars before, before I settled on this council. And, you know, the money we're dealing with is not, it's not a whole lot of money. Because one transformer go down, $4 million, you think they'd stop power or wipe this town out. The recommendation to save 8% of the town's funding in case there's a disaster, hurricane or whatever, that's only going to sustain this town for one month. After then, we'd be at the mercy of FEMA or God knows what. And that known, and I do have an accounting degree and a business degree and a social degree to deal with people and their minds. And that's why I do every day, I deal with people with mental issues, and I've seen a lot going on. But even, I want the records to speak for themselves, and I believe if we get a presentation, or where the person that's responsible come forward and tell the truth and stop sensationalizing and fanning slangs. Because see, I'm the person, I can sit here and have loose balls both sides of me, and I respect him for who he is. But you, you can't put personal issue with professional. Now, I want this town continually run by people and their personal issue. If you don't like to buy that, so hang, you don't have to like, you don't have to like me. But respect me and respect me for what I am and who I am. Now, if there's somebody up here that can step in the shoes, or any department head, add a town manager, I would just stand up and raise a hand. It's not to sit here, I don't see the day-to-day operations of everything. So to sit here and say the gentleman's not doing his job, I don't agree with that. If there's some improvement, we all get to do on what we do, okay? And so if there's some measures for improvement, then I'm here for that. But I'm not going to go to terminate the town manager because it's far, it's far better off. And I don't want to go into what has been, because that's history, we don't leave it. But it's far better off. And we have had to train to get to this point, so he has not been stopped powerlessly. If someone in passing said, you know, they need to look into this situation, that's one thing, and say, "Oh, we in danger. We gotta do something right now." You know, I don't think that took place. And that's what the comment I made, I was certain, I hope if he knew there was any danger to this town because our system was in such poor condition, that he would have taken action. And the person responsible for reporting that should follow the chain of command, should have a report, and should be a paper trail for that information. And so, and knowing that there's not a, it's not just one system. And, and for, you know, information to be put out there, it's more than one system. And you will find that out tonight and how they all work together, and you will understand.
Yeah, very quickly, Mr. Mayor, we have been here for about an hour now, and I keep hearing people talking about citizens, and I'm glad that everyone's here. But we have 11,400 something citizens in Tarboro. The people that are ultimately responsible to the citizens, and when the citizens can really express their opinion, is that the valid part. If the citizens don't like what they're doing up here, then they should go definitely and vote us in or out. We have a similar Tarboro plan that I am looking forward to hearing. But we are sitting here still having these conversations that we had six months ago. We have not come to any kind of consensus. And what we need to be doing is the citizens' business, and listening to these reports, not only from Mr. Edwards and Mr. Brown, but we want to talk about the radio system from people that actually work with that system for the town of Tarboro every day. I really want the citizens, the next time they go to the polls, to listen to what's going on. Don't necessarily pay attention to people that talk the loudest and sound the loudest and make absolutely no sense. We have to make sure the town grows, and that we do everything in this town to make sure that every citizen in the town of Tarboro has access, lots of them, and become productive citizens. So I hope that whatever the motion is, we'll go ahead and deal with that motion so we can get about the business of the town of Tarboro.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second on the floor for, to ask for the town manager's resignation, I think that is the commission. All in favor, yes, say aye.
Aye.
Or raise a yes, I can see, I'm sorry. All opposed, no. Motion failed.
This is what has been said by several people. This goes into favor, and I'm seeing what was said to me directly by several people. My name's Leo Taylor, L-E-O-T-A-Y-L-O-R, War Two, and you know how I vote. Thank you. This is a direct person that you've been...
Say what again?
Yes.
I'm going to reserve the right to have something to say about this. I will say that I'm extremely disappointed that we would jump to having a closed session if it has some individuals before we actually heard any factual information. I'm disappointed that the information that is contained in your packets that you had for a better part of a week details all that information factually, and yet we still sit up here with some of us and try to disseminate untruths and outright be-its.
All right, now.
After the presentations in regards to this communication system are made, I want to reserve the opportunity to say my piece. I think I owe that.
Yes, sir.
I'll wait until after the presentation is made on the communication system. I think that's what everyone is waiting to hear.
Before we do that, I want to pass these out.
Sir, here's the resignation, you got two.
I want to read this to the council at this time. Waking up again in the middle of the night and not being able to go to sleep, act asleep, sound familiar? Searching your heart and soul and determining that the stress and pressure of being mayor in the present atmosphere of the town of Tarboro is taking far too great a toll on my life and is not worth the effort. So with a sad mark on my here, my notice of resignation, Mr. Mayor of the town of Tarboro. I thank the people that voted to put me in the office, and I'm sorry I failed you. My goal is to lead the town of Tarboro and to become a better place to work, play, and do. But the opportunity to do these things seems to be an impossible task. Please pray for the town of Tarboro. Thank y'all so much for having me, sir.
As Mayor Prokhor, I will now preside over this meeting. And we, as a council, will come together at a later date to decide how we will proceed henceforth. At this time.
Mr. Mayor, ready?
My name is Rick Page, 1502 Chelsea Drive, Tarboro, North Carolina. I would like to request that council please make sure that there's an effort to rethink the doors and the left and right that I've been trying to get done for the past two years and have failed to accomplish that. So please put that on the agenda. Another thing that I would actually do, and I had a whole lot of discussion with a lot of citizens, and we are getting ready to hire or advertise for a new police chief. I would ask that council revisit the residency requirements for the department heads in the town of Tarboro and see if there's things that should be living in the town or not required to live in the town. And I think these two actions would be very important before we fill that position, to make sure that we're on the right track with what the people of Tarboro want. And I think councilman Knight said that, or Mayor Prokhor Knight said that very well, that as citizens of Tarboro, 11,000 strong, and they are the ones that should be speaking of, of having to oversee the council in the town. I appreciate your involvement, and I hope we transduce through that. I'd also like to look at the insurance reimbursement for people that have insurance, that leave survival plans on insurance. If there's any way that we can not force them to have that insurance, I appreciate you taking the action to alleviate that situation, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Hey, Al Raxton, 24th and 16th Avenue, Tarboro, North Carolina. I'd like to go up here and say a few things. I'm saying this as a citizen, but I'm saying it as a citizen that knows some of the things that go on, some of the things that have happened. I will address it, I know, Ms. Jordan, you said you want to hear from the horse's mouth what happened. I was in charge as far as on the shift work that day when the call came out and the radio failed. Is that a bad situation? It's a terrible situation. Is it something that can be avoided? Maybe, maybe not. Electronics do fail. Electronics fail. Did I feel on an island? Yeah, it's on an island. I had a rookie that was with one of the victims, a rookie that wasn't even out of training. And nobody knew where he was at. Nobody knew where I was at. But we did what we had to do. We all had cell phones, we got on the phone, we called, we worked things out, it took a while, we got things in order. Now, if we're going to, and I, I'm not home on vacation, I apologize for how I look, I'm sorry, but I haven't missed a council meeting, I think, in maybe one or two, in five or six years now. Because I do want to be involved, and when I get done, I want to be involved even more. But I don't know what the plan is, I haven't talked to the chief, anybody, about what the plan is as far as radios. I will say this, if we're going to do a radio system, let's do it right. And it is going to cost money. Let's visit who's going to run it. Let's visit who's going to work in there. Because I'm going to go ahead and tell you, as the person who knows, having one person working in there is not enough. It's not enough to be working in there. If I had that call come in, being on shift, and I ran the communication center for a couple of years, if that call came in, and then another call of the same nature, or if a call came in of somebody having a heart attack or somebody that needed help, that dispatcher can't answer two serious calls at one time. So if we're going to do it, let's be serious about it, we're not going to spend money to do it. If you're not going to spend the money to do it, there needs to be another way of doing this. It can go to the county, turn it over to emergency management, give it to somebody, let's combine them, do whatever we have to do. But let's quit sitting here bickering about it, and let's decide what we're going to do, and get down to brass tacks and get it done. Because if we're not, all you're doing is you're hurting us. You're hurting me as an officer, and you're going to hurt my officers later on. So that's what needs to be done.
Thank you, Al Raxton. I would say, I don't want to speak, Hall Council, but I would tell you, I think all I can do is make sure that the police department has what they need, the fire department has what they need to do their job. Safety is, I've been, I've noticed, for all of us. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And thank you for offering solutions, alternatives, and for putting us in the right direction, we need to try and solve what the issues are.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'm Ron Soweans, we're here tonight, just to twirl with me, sure, here's the Tarboro, right here. Starting the meeting off, difficult, but I prepared, uh, tonight, I have my opinion. It shows the level of non-respect this public body has with the public. And starting off the meeting, and immediately moving to a closed session, and then resuming that meeting sometime in or about 7:34, when people were waiting for this meeting that was supposed to start at 7 o'clock. There's other times in which you can call for a closed session, do what you had to do, and ultimately, I guess, the results of that closed session were not needed anywhere. So, yeah, I totally agree, but I do encourage the board to respect the public at that time. As, as councilman, or that I've talked about, 11,000 people who you represent. I'm speaking on behalf also of Edgecombe Tribune, work with that company a lot with the band. And it's our goal with the Edgecombe Tribune to promote facts in Edgecombe County. We are, when we're reporting news, our primary goal is to be non-biased and share the whole truth and not just part. Our goal is to be objective in our reporting. To some, it's been apparent that we may, we may have some bias in our reporting. So I say tonight to all of our citizens, that it is my immediate task to work on our non-biased reporting, so they will begin to be, uh, non-biased rather, so we can have a sense of unity in our community. The biggest thing for local news media is to also help enhance the quality of life for citizens in our county. In fact, it represents a whole entire Edgecombe County. To show the positive things that's happening with our youth, to show the, the edited, though not edited, but the audits for the finance department that happened here, that they came clean. I don't know if this ever happened, uh, reported out there, but there's a lot of things that have happened in Tarboro that oftentimes are swept under the rug, and it causes discords in the community. And when a community is divided, it cannot move forward. In order for train to, to fully move forward, all the teachers of that train must be working together in order for it to move. If not, you're stuck in yesterday. One of our greatest assets to this organization, such as a public bias is talking about, is unity and a desire to improve the quality of life of the citizens, all of the citizens of Tarboro. And in my opinion, what is detrimental to the town is special interests and mandates. These things have no place in public governance. Let's be about improving the quality of life of all citizens in Tarboro. Surely I'm about to improve the life of people, not just in Edgecombe, but nationally, state of North Carolina for that matter. One of the things in the, in my Bible, a Christian, so it talks about helping our brother and our sister along the way, so our living won't be in vain. We gotta ask ourselves every day, what am I doing to make my neighbor a better person? Because if my neighbor's okay, then I'm okay. Let's talk about the town manager, who you just voted, or tried to vote to ask for his resignation. When I look at the town manager, Mr. Allen Thornton, had an opportunity to talk to him on two occasions. Uh, one being, I want to clarify to you this, maybe the town attorney can help us, but this, and that is, if the city govern itself in its meetings by the robber rules of order. Because if in fact you do, I recommend this board get trained on robber rules in order, how to conduct a proper business meeting, and proper motions and etc. But talk about the town manager, and nearly handling a $50 million year annual budget. Looking at the conditions of Tarboro from when he started to where it is today, looking at the fund balance that's currently here, one may have it a whole lot of work. And so, uh, sending a motion to ask the man to resign, why not make a motion to find somebody to help him have an assistant? Someone who can look at these things every day, when you look at a police force, it may have daily needs and necessities. This man cannot do it by himself. Perhaps, council, we're looking at the wrong thing. We need to be looking at things on how to approve our city and approve it every day. But one thing I do disagree with, and maybe some of the citizens make, not like this, but the 9% reduction that you just passed to include the whole 19%, I, I, March 28th, I'll be 30 years old, so I don't have that long, but I will say this, that I, I do know that in almost 30 years, a rainy day will come. It's not always sunshine. So we have to be good financial stewards of our money, and understand, we gotta put back a little bit for that rain day. Maybe not the 09, maybe you pass on 7%. So that if, so when something happens, we're not rushing to the citizens' pockets and asking them for some more money because they're struggling. But at least they can budget, and we've got to lead by example. We all have personal budgets in our, in our homes, maybe some, and I need more time, but thank you.
John Wood, uh, this is, like you said, another senior officer. Mr. Man, I got your back. I've worked with you in several different organizations here in the town, in the gay, in the people, and I told you more, that's what we need. So I got your back. Thanks, sir. The Edgecombe Tribune had a story of, I guess, why you were in, you know, the tree, where the stabilization crew had, what, about 99% put in there to take care of a rainy day. I ate the deep bed horse. But, you know, I, I was taught... But, you know, I, I was taught to say you're a little, little piggyback when I was eight years old. It, it doesn't make sense to spend money just because you have it sometimes. Just, just hang on for a little while and, and, and think about it a second time before you, before you spend it. I'm talking about, you know, giving the money back to the citizens. We understood it when you, when you just gave us ten percent. So, I, I don't know whether you retract that look or what, but I think it is a good idea.
Yes, sir. I think that the citizen needs some clarification on, on that, on nine percent. The nine percent is for, uh, price stabilization, so that if, uh, due power raise, the rates within a short period of time, we would be able to offset that with that percentage. But in the interim, uh, what happened was that, uh, the electric cities, they had some, a, a windfall and they had seven percent. So they withheld that to do the same thing that we were doing with the nine percent. Now, the nine percent was never meant to do anything but to keep the rates down. As far as the reserve to handle any kind of capital expenditure, we have a separate fund for that. So that is not in danger at all. We do have, I think, it's around four million dollars set aside to handle anything within the electric department that may come about, transformer that may go, if they leave, all we can handle it. But the, but the rate stabilization, uh, uh, fund was for that purpose, was since the, uh, electric cities decided to do it at that level, we decided it was okay, uh, in the benefit of the citizen to go ahead and, and not withhold it to nine percent anymore. Uh, that, that was the reason. We, we, we still want, it still is something built there to where there won't be a raise until...
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. You see what I'm saying? So our, our withholding was served the same purpose as the, that electric city hold it. So it wasn't anything that was, uh, I think was irresponsible, just, um, um, not, not necessary for us to continue withhold that money since we had electric cities already doing it. And we do have money in a separate fund for any kind of capital emergency or expenditure. That's just an explanation, not, not, not a...
We won't get into a back and forth.
You apply all that, and, of course, it was like, he has a...
You, you still... No, it wasn't a pain, I'm just, I, that's fine. I wasn't given an opinion, I was given explanations and what, what...
I appreciate that.
Okay.
I appreciate that. But, uh, okay, so you, you explained that you had a reserve fund, a high fund, to replace transformers and poles, something like that, right? Okay, uh, now, in, you, at first you were looking at for the citizens, uh, in, you know, with the stabilization fund, in case, uh, the rates went up, okay? Now, I understand that since, since, uh, that decision was made, the elect, that, uh, Duke says that they weren't going to have an increase, right? Is that correct? They weren't going to have an increase in the electrical rates until twenty twenty? Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, what...
That's not correct.
Duke did not say that, no, sir.
Who said that?
The police, the citizens. He's saying that they're not.
Uh, we, we get this break.
No.
I mean, I...
I don't want anybody to hold Duke, have Duke progress as soon as they may definitely do that same thing.
All right. So, you know, that, that, that was, that was my concern, is that, you know, maybe we could have used some of that, that money that wouldn't be used for, for the rate stabilization, uh, you know, that, that technical, uh, to give us the money back because of, uh, because of the, what, uh, electric cities said that they weren't going to have rate increases. Uh, I don't know, I think that I use the stock market for an example, you know, it's up one day, down the next. Do we have any reassurance that there's not going to be any increases before we, uh, give the money back to the citizens? Otherwise, we'll need to take it back.
Unfortunately, no. It's, there could be, I mean, they have a prime, you know, like we have the import half, we just own it. There could be something take place in the middle that prices go back up. All of this was based upon, in large part, price natural gas.
That's what I'm saying.
I know that that's the best information we have, and, uh, in my opinion, act upon the best insulation available. To the, to the assurances that we would want, the city to rate increase until twenty twenty. However, if we did, then council would be having that conversation, uh, about the, the need for an increase here for the town of Tarboro and its council.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Well, are there any more citizens with requests or petitions?
I'm here for the county, uh, Ben Williams, former member of Tarboro, North Carolina. Uh, of course, everyone knows that I'm your outgoing police chief, but I wanted to personally thank the citizens, uh, for your support and, uh, uh, over the last, um, four years. And the overwhelming response that I've gotten since I've announced my resignation has just been amazing. And I never in my years thought that response would come. But I want to thank, uh, members of council for your support. Uh, my city forum member Owens, who's supported, uh, the department for quite a few years at home, uh, who has also been saying, if I miss somebody, please don't, uh, hold against me, councilman, bro. Uh, but most importantly, Allen for giving me the opportunity to serve. Uh, we know that this has not always been an easy process, but, uh, I would like to think that together we've done some great work along with the department, and I thank you all as well. Uh, but once again, council, I thank you for your continued support. And I expect you to take care of any women that work with this department. They work hard every day, it's not inhumane. That's the top is being on there every day with the city's support. So thank you again, appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Are there any others? Okay, seeing that there are none, we have no matter scheduled for further hearing?
Keith L. Horst, thirteen, two thousand twelve, W. E. B. He said, "Good afternoon, this convenient, I would like to stop by and see you tomorrow Thursday in reference to our radio system, and it will be up there." I mean, that's what he said, y'all sit near there telling me it didn't say.
That, that is not, Lieutenant Hell, at some point, we're going to ask you the question, well, what are our alternatives now? And that is what I think we all, as, as a council, would like to hear. I'm not interested in placing blame. At the end of your presentation, you said we have to get you replaced at some point, and we will ask you, uh, what steps do we have to take?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, Captain Brown, how do you...
It's just a movement. You have to switch it to light.
Yes, sir.
How much time is it too tight for?
It's very, very, very quick, it's just about a hundred and thousand, but it's, it's dropping. Yes, this is another channel, right?
Will the office will automatically move the radio channel or will it move to the project?
Well, if, you know, fails to drive you, then we'll fail to get some type of communication to them out there via cell phone or, or whatever we need to do. And move that number also to send a message to the vision buses that is down and you can switch up the bike, and so they'll, they'll get it, and it's fantastic, it won't take long.
It will automatically move.
They won't automatically, uh, uh, it's, 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 it's dropping.
Let me say this, uh, because I feel, Councilman Brown, there would be no difference if, if the new system went down, it would be the same, same asset. Uh, if we had an electronic issue go wrong with our, our new two million dollar system, for example, it would be the same, same process that would need to be utilized. Uh, so ultimately, you know, you're going to have electronic failures some time and time. Of course, we're trying to make it, then you can't mitigate it, but, uh, you will have this technology, talking about computers crash, uh, lightning strikes, all kinds of things go wrong here. But what we're trying to do when I began to discuss this radio system in the retreat, was begin to let it ground work. Um, prior to you coming to retreat, the department and I had already met, I've already spoken with Allen, Lieutenant Hell and, and myself, along with, uh, Sergeant Webb, I've already talked to let it ground work to try to replace the system. Um, I think the perception has been that, that the system, we let the system get down, it's prepared, that's not true. What we start to do, let it ground work for a very expensive capital project. Uh, of course, there are multiple needs in the police department today. We've done that just based on the need seventy-four council over the last couple of years. Uh, but I want everybody to know that I will handle it. No, with Lieutenant Hell, Sergeant Webb, the town manager, or any other member of this council allow our office to be placed in any kind of danger because our radio system is safe. Uh, there are some things just out of our control and there are some things we're not controlling. Uh, I, I will bring up the fact that, of course, every single time I've come to ask for upgrade, there has been a lot of contention. That has not been easy. We try to lay all the groundwork early, so that when we came to the council, we were well prepared to answer any questions that, that were received. But before we get even to that point, the groundwork well have already begun, uh, and that created even more turmoil for this project. So what we want to do is really let you all understand that, yes, we have an aging system. Yes, our system is actually limited lifespan, uh, just like your car would be at the end of sixteen years. But however, if you can find working parts in your car, you can keep a nineteen sixty-seven Chevy on the road for thirty-two years, you might not want to, but you can. What we're going to do is, is let it ground work down so we can begin to replace our system. We want the office to have the best of the best that we can and the fee, but it is an expensive venture. And we're, we're, I'm optimistic, but I'm a truthful person as well, this system is going to be expensive, but it's one that we're going to have to undertake. It's not a police department issue, it's an entire town issue. The fire department, that's the fire department, we're all in this system. Of course, we use it, probably most of the fire department behind us, but all in all, this is a town, subject to a town priority, not a police department project.
My question is, is not just that cash...
Yes, sir.
But that city, I'm about people sitting there, I mean, sitting out here and they want to know if the timeline, if the system does go down, you know, it may not be your policeman's life, maybe my life.
Certainly.
So if, if you have to convert to that private system, I, I want to know, I'd like them to know how much time it takes to do that.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. And let me tell you, absolutely, absolutely.
If they feel, if they're in a position to make a move for that's late.
And, and, you know, as the chief of police, I want to make sure these guys say. I mean, I was at the scene that day myself. So it, it's not a good feeling to know that you don't have communications. However, you, what we have to do is put within a reasonable question, it shouldn't happen again, because something else may happen next round, you know, with our system. It's, it's an electronic piece of equipment. The things that failed were almost, almost unaffordable, as, as, but I spoke to Mr. Reyes myself, and he told me there were three completely separate failures and three separate different trunkey systems, and I'm, I'm going, is that known? It's not, not by any means. So, you know, uh, some things are unaffordable. Uh, I'm proud of the minimum that we dealt with in the baseball that day. I'm thankful to God, everything turned out great. Uh, but I can assure you and promise you that these types of things won't occur again. We've had a system go down before, not in the same manner, but it went down before, and we lost communications. How you deal with that until it goes down, it's the system in place. And that's when you're talking about the total, the, 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 the kind of challenge. So, um, like I said, we're trying to let it ground work, so the council have a full understanding of what is needed to fix the system so that we can move into the future.
Chief, I guess two million or two million dollars question is, when will we hear, when, when are we going to get a recommendation that we need to move forward? Whatever the next step is to make sure that all the citizens have what they need to protect them, to protect the citizens, how, how far, how far down the road are we before we're going to get that, so move forward?
Oh, we're very close. We, we have that. I would already say ready to present to Allen, uh, but, uh, it's, now, it's not a little bit, you can hear the stuff he's talking about.
Yeah.
And you heard the stuff that Sergeant Webb is talking about, it's all kind of mind blowing. It's a tactic, man, that you, that you might have to, have to carefully read through, uh, that lays out everything. Uh, but, uh, I would argue that, that, that would be a very, very short timeframe.
Okay, you had something else?
I, yeah, reference to Mr. Feld's question, yeah, we, we're working on putting that together now. When we give it to Mr. Thornton, we want to make sure that we present to y'all the facts of how we can, not all, not all that we need this money back, but maybe some resources on how we can get this money and work with that system also. Uh, I, I'll quickly fini- finish up on the third part, so I can address what Mr. Mike was talking about. Um, this, this system also has backups compatibility, you know, whereas if we had old analog radios, which we don't, or digital, it would, you, it would work with those analog radios. And it gives us the ability to encrypt our, our conversations, so if there's something that we're working on that we don't want somebody to hear on a scanner, we can encrypt it so that they can't use, you know, basically that's what it means. And I touched on the infrastructure and equipment that would have to be replaced. So, uh, to address what Mr. Mike was saying, yeah, we do need the board on replacing this radio system, there's no doubt about it. Um, as far as cost goes, it's going to be expensive, somewhere in the neighborhood of around two million dollars. A way to offset some of that cost is that the consulate that's set inside the dispatch can, we can use E nine one money to replace those bills. That's just a small piece of the pie, okay, but we can use that money. I have also been in talks with Mole Roll, and they, they have a leasing program out there, uh, that's zero percent interest, uh, you can lease it, I think it's three, five, and seven year plan, uh, where it's kind of like doing a capital outlay thing, but it would be at least a home deal, so that at the end of the lease, if we went on the radio system. Uh, I'm also in the process of going to Mole Roll to see if there's any grant funding opportunities out there that we may be able to participate in, and if there is, they will assist us in writing a grant to help purchase the radio system. Uh, but, and the other good thing is that the radios that the police department have, the radios that the fire department have, and the radios that the electric department has, we will work on a new system, so we don't have to have that expense of buying those cordables to replace them all at the same time when we put the new system in place. Uh, thank you for your...
Let me ask, uh, Lieutenant Hell, your best guess, now, I don't want you to rush anything.
Yes, sir.
Will you have all of that information, that package, available to the town manager by next town?
We, we have the, the, uh, quote, we have the, the leasing that they offer, uh, and I hadn't heard, I, I've sent some email on the grant funding, I didn't, but I thought it was back to the, but, but the E nine one side is, is listed on their website that we can pay for this council, so, yes, we can have that in, in a very short period of time.
So we can have everything that we need, uh, at our next council?
Hopefully, yes. We have essentially a proposal for Mole Roll. We might have that conversation that, um, obviously I think that we need to have about any questions that management may have in regards to that proposal, that that's the next logical step in all of that, before we come to this council and have that greater discussions about necessity of funding and timing and all those types of things. So, like the chief said, there are a lot of moving parts with this system. Um, the recommendation of the expenditure of two million dollars is not something that we take lightly. We want to feel completely confident in what we are presenting to this council, because two million dollars is, um, nearly half of what you have in the fund balance, is our right there. That's a significant undertaking. I mean, we're really, we've seen all the other needs that we have, and, uh, I'm not making it right in fact that, you know, we have the available funds to do that. Um, but I think it's our responsibility to make sure that what we're recommending is something that we, we feel confident in making that recommendation to. Because after hearing all of this, I hope that what council has gathered is that what you have is a technological advancement challenge. That's what you have. Um, technology has evolved and has created a challenge where these components aren't getting outdated. That's what it is. The system works chronologically. We have a backup to that system, and we have the availability to find components to maintain that system and keep it working. However, it's aged, and it's a technological advancement, just like you replace a TV that had a big jack console, a new screen, sixty-five inch TV. It's just age out of thing. Um, however, it's our responsibility to bring that information to council. That's exactly what we've been trying to do, um, at the retreat, uh, when all of this disintegrated into something else. So I'm glad that you provided the opportunity to my staff to present this information to this council and to the public who really needs to hear this and who really need to hear the facts of the information, because they would get a lot of stuff. And in my opinion, it was unfortunate what was thrown out there. I think a lot of people were given a lot of information, but they didn't care or have concern for their, their personal safety. And to do that is quite frankly unforgivable, in my opinion. To do that and know that facts are something else is just absolutely wrong. To me, that crossed the line. Uh, I've sat up here for four years and been accused of a lot of things, been called untruthful, been accused of mismanaging this town, a lot of other things, and I've tolerated it, because quite frankly, that's what I'm trained to do. I have nearly twenty-five years of experience, and, uh, you know, am I proud that the town has improved its fund balance to forty-one point oh two percent from six point five has improved its fund balance to forty-one point oh two percent from six point five three percent at the time that I got here? You darn right I am. Why would I not be? The town's reserves are at the strongest position that we have been in ten years. Um, during my time here, the town's not raised taxes. We've not increased water, sewer or electric utility rates. In fact, the town has reduced its electric utility cost by nineteen percent across the board. And in that same process paid off more than ninety million dollars in contractually obligated utility debt. And amazingly, there's still a handful of people who would try to lead the public to believe that all this is a bad thing. I believe that the people of the town of Tarboro are a bit too intelligent to buy into this propaganda and that they understand that a strong financial position and having ample reserves means that there is a greatly reduced likelihood of future tax increases. And that establishing reserves are in fact the town's contingency plan to deal with unanticipated expenses and emergencies like what you just heard. Am I proud of these accomplishments? I ask you, should I not be? If you served in my position, would you not be? So, yeah, I'm, I'm a little ticked off this evening about having things written in somebody's blog or Facebook page that have no idea what the heck they're talking about and attacking me. Cause, um, quite frankly, that stuff's out there for my kids to see and my license to. So I don't take it very lightly. And that's why I'm having this conversation this evening or making this statement tonight. For nearly four years and the second Monday of each month, I've sat up here and then subjected to being called untruthful. And other various allegations include we have the town's mismanaged, along with a new conspiracy theory that's been brought forth nearly every month. I have witnessed this toxic effect and the dysfunction that this has created. Effect the town's staff to the port where two of the town's broadest and most important members of the management team retired of the constant attacks and decided to take their talents elsewhere. I've now sent two managers to leave because of that same, same thing. Until now, I've not publicly addressed this toxic environment because my nearly twenty-five years of service as a professional municipal manager has taught me to refrain from such things and to maintain the higher standard of public decor while understanding that there will always be unhappy, negative individuals who almost seem to take pleasure in negativity and trying to make others as unhappy as they obviously are. I find that I can no longer bite my tongue and you laugh as you wish, that the latest conspiracy theory here in Tarboro perpetuated by few individuals who in their rush to play gotcha have misinformed the public and made very serious allegations that irresponsibly would have both the public and the employees of this town believe that their personal safety is at risk. It's not only just playing wrong, it's irresponsible, dangerous, and quite frankly unforgivable. This council was provided with documentation and the public just heard a presentation on members of the town staff who are the most involved in and have the greatest knowledge of the status and condition of the town's communication systems to convey that not only is the town's central com plus CRT console communications infrastructure currently operational, but that there is a backup to this system via Viper and that while staff is performing the necessary and proper due diligence and researching and determining the most appropriate, reliable and affordable options to upgrade this communications infrastructure, we have the capability to acquire any components associated with the current Motorola Series Two Central Com plus CRT console communications infrastructure from a fifteen mile labor to the west, the city of Rockingham, amongst other in the state of North Carolina. I say again that this misguided attempt to attack and to blame someone rather than constructively and collectively discuss and address the issue at hand has crossed the line. Not only has this latest personal attack added to the dysfunction that is witnessed on each second Monday of the month, it has now unfortunately moved into the realm of this toxic element that has purposefully undermined the very fabric of public trust in the government that serves the element by making irresponsible statements and disseminating misleading information that is intended to inflame and inappropriately scare the public reserve. I'm calling on council to end this latest misguided witch hunt and to address the dysfunction, discord and negativity within its ranks and effectively govern and provide the insightful and intelligent leadership the town of Tarboro needs to obtain a brighter, more progressive future. I call upon the public to let its leadership know that you expect better from those that are supposed to lead and govern the town of Tarboro. Ask yourselves, what purpose is all this serving? And I think that what you fully understand the motivation behind all this negativity and personal attacks truly quite incredible. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Manager, if, Mr. Councilman Wood, I remember, um, um, Councilman Burnett had his hand up first. It was hard to recognize him.
Well, uh, Lieutenant Hale or Chief, uh, we're talking a five, three to five year payment plan, correct? And it'll probably take, we said today, we said, buy, hold it, take it, get it installed. And that produced five years. It said we used five years. With this system that we were talking about, would it be outdated or close to being outdated? We've got to rehash this whole thing again?
In the, in the handout that I did on the, the P twenty-five, it says it has the backwards compatibility. In other words, it's there for, for future buildup. In other words, when we put this in, going forward in the future, it's gonna be a system that's there for us in the future also.
It's gotta do a life shift.
Right.
And it's just the same system of like Mount Houston?
Yes, that's exactly what it, it purpose and, and, and install name.
So it would be the same, same way we could, if something would happen, it would be that a lot more parts and we don't have to hit them or somewhere. We get it real quick.
But you know, the, the, the life expectancy of this is just as long as the one with his head. You know, keep in mind that we got sixteen, within sixteen years out of that before the end of the support. So it would be good for a real long time on support. And given the fact that it is built for moving forward in the future, the support would always be there for that, that system.
Captain Wood, uh, yes, um, I would wanna say, uh, um, you asked about having it prepared for April. I would hope that you can give the town manager time to do a thorough investigation, look at it himself and you can, and before you all bring it back to council.
Yes, sir, thank you. Once I said that and I looked at his face, I, I knew that April might have, I, I, right there. We want to make sure as a town that we get this right and make sure that our citizens are safe. Are there any more questions for the?
I didn't wanna say.
Yes, sir.
I hope that the citizens got a better view of what's going on. I, I, I'm impressed with all the intricacy of this system, communications, the telephone system, radio system. And there've been numerous upgrades through the years, uh, numerous efforts to try to keep the system working. They've developed and learned from, uh, this particular incident that we're talking about, put redundancies in place. And, uh, but I'm hearing that the system is safe, but once in a while, just once in a while, everything goes wrong and makes things, uh, uh, tough for us. But they've learned and, uh, I think they have a system in place that they feel comfortable, uh, where, where I haven't heard anybody say that wasn't the case. And I think they continue to improve the system. And we do have to wait until we get facts from professionals before we make our decision about one or two things that go on. So I'm hoping that that will shed some light on, I'm really impressed with you guys and what y'all have been doing and how you all have been working to try to continue to improve our system. And I do trust that you all will, uh, continue to put forth a plan that we can, uh, put in place. And I do know that Chief, while you've been here, there's been many numerous things you try to upgrade. And I do recall, and I don't know any exception, that every time you try to upgrade something, there've been negative comments and criticism. And I, I do recall saying, thank you for bringing us into the twenty-first century. And I know that sometimes y'all had to take the comfort for us because, uh, there's a lot of criticism, a lot of awfulizing, a lot of I got you and that kind of thing. And I'm very sorry for that, but, hey, I hope that will change and we will, uh, we'll, we'll be better. Steward for what we do here, uh, I wanna thank, uh, the mayor for his job. I know it's been very stressful for you. I know you've been working very hard. And I hope that we as citizens, wait, wait, here for the people that know what they're talking about. It was topless, uh, this, uh, social media stuff that goes on. And, uh, and, and I just think that we gotta, we gotta be better as a town as a whole. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Okay, I need a motion. We can move on to the town manager's recommendation. Uh, the town talk with communication system, Chief Williams and Sergeant Williams will come up and deliver their presentation.
Good afternoon, members of council and, uh, members of the department, staff and citizens. Uh, this afternoon, we're gonna talk a little bit about our infrastructure and radio communications. Uh, I'm gonna do a first hand presentation to Sergeant Jesse Williams, um, who is over our PSAT. He's our primary non-munitions and also Lieutenant, uh, Keith Hale, who is our investigation lieutenant and also overseeing the construction division, uh, within the police department. Uh, I will tell you that, um, I want, I want citizens to know primarily that the police department is not in trouble. We're not in, in dire straits. Uh, we need to communicate. Do we have an aging system? Yes, we do. Does that aging system put our officers in danger on a daily basis? No, it does not. Uh, it is up and running and it's holding us together. Uh, does it need to be replaced? Of course, everything with aging needs to be replaced, but, uh, we are, we are laying, laying the groundwork now to replace our system. Uh, but our system is not in dire straits as it has been portrayed in the way. Uh, what we're doing is we're laying the groundwork now so that we can properly prepare and utilize and, and, and institute a new system. So Sergeant Williams will give a presentation on our current infrastructure. Then it will be E nine one one and our radio communication system are two separate systems. So we're gonna break them down as such, okay? Sergeant Williams?
Good evening. I will try to be as short with it as possible. Um, what we were asked to do was provide a overview and status update of our various communication systems. Um, we opted to look at the, the overall town's infrastructure, the E nine one one system, uh, the current cleaning projects we have and of course the radio system. I'm gonna brief, uh, reach through some of these slides just for time sake, so if you have any questions, shoot my number. Uh, regarding the town's infrastructure, uh, when we talk about the town's infrastructure, we're focusing on the IT side that we give you. Um, in collaboration with the finance manager, uh, back in June, we began a three-phase upgrade to the town's overall infrastructure. The first phase is gonna be the updating all the virtual servers that we already have. Uh, the two primary ones we were focused on is the domain controller and the exchange server. Uh, naturally you can understand the intricacies of, of both those servers um, because the domain controller actually controls all of our user accounts for every town employee. Uh, Microsoft Exchange, of course, is, uh, is a given, that controls all our emails. So you can, you can kind of understand how much work it goes require. That phase is currently completed. Uh, the second phase, uh, is also completed. That was the installation of a SAN unit. The SAN unit actually took the place for, uh, was divided up from what we call ES X host uh, and divided into ES X and a SAN. SAN is our storage. So all of our files and data is stored on that SAN. That phase is currently completed as well.
When was that, uh, completed? When was that completed?
Uh, that, the SAN phase was completed about two months ago. The third phase, which is in progress now, is the actual replacement of that ES X host. Um, we added a, uh, additional objective to that, which was our NAS devices. The NAS devices are certifiables or in that disaster recovery. Uh, and I'll give them that, uh, a little bit later, basically with another aspect to that. Um, that phase is currently in progress and it has to be, the tangible work is not being done yet. Um, the, the equipment is being acquired. However, that equipment is in place, it's just simply being replaced. This is a, a quick overview of some of our infrastructure. This was, uh, coming from an audit that we did, uh, with the SBI back in June for our DCI purposes. Uh, you can see all the ones on the right are all gonna be directly related to the E nine one one center of those servers. Uh, there's another server over here that we use for video. Some of these have been removed and combined with other servers, so we don't have quite as many servers. Another depiction is gonna be our overall peripheral, uh, devices. Uh, all of it comes back live to that ES X host right there. Um, that's gonna be, I guess, the brain on the hood of all of our servers. This is actually just a photo of, of what we're talking about. The top piece is that SAN up top. That's what was just completely new installed. The ES, uh, ES X host is right beneath it. That's what's on the, uh, platter to be, uh, replaced. In regards to the E nine one one center, we also completed an upgrade of that back in February. And that was a complete upgrade. Uh, that was using nine one one search engines and all those different ones. Uh, that included, uh, upgrades to the servers, all the workstations, uh, replaced all the hardware and software for the nine one one communication center, including new MACI technology, uh, which added additional layers of, uh, MACI to our system. Uh, included the new thirty-six month maintenance agreement and also it, it made us now compliant with next generation nine one one, which is still kind of coming on underlising. Uh, we're not really prepared for that yet because there's not a need for it. Uh, that's gonna be something where, uh, you have multiple PSATs or nine one one centers serving as backup centers for each other. So we could actually be serving as a backup center for somebody in a bunking counter. Uh, that's the, that's the direction that I think. Uh, we've also implemented text in nine one one. Again, there was no cost to the town on that. That was something free of charge. Um, all four of the major carriers, Verizon, T-Buck, Sprint and even cellular are now onboard with that. So now all our citizens who have cell phone service are, are able to text to all PSAT and receive nine one one service. Uh, the last company was actually just implemented last week. Uh, it takes a process and they're responsible for that, but the process originally began about six months, but it's not completely completed. Uh, this is actually a user interface of our nine one one system. Uh, so when you look at, or nine one one call comes in, this is what the dispatchers are looking at. The right side is, is actually our TTY communications. That's where our text in the nine one one comes into play at. Um, this was, uh, a new user interface as well. We'll see that here in another footage. Uh, this is gonna actually be the primary components that were replaced during the E nine one one upgrade. Uh, these are gonna be all the servers, all the switches, all the routers that were replaced. Uh, and again, that was not due, uh, coming from any kind of, uh, town pressure. This is actually gonna be a depiction of what the dispatchers are looking at. Over to your left is gonna be the actual nine one one console that was replaced. Uh, the top right display is gonna be that new MACI system that we refer to, uh, that offers the additional new multiple layers. Uh, over to your left on the top is gonna be the, uh, user interface for our radio system. And the two bottom monitors are gonna be, uh, two monitors that are used for other applications such as our records management system, our computer aided dispatch, uh, and those kind of things. Just a minute here. Now, as an extension of our actual physical E nine one one center, uh, the town has in place what we call, uh, mobile, uh, dispatch as well. So each one of our patrol vehicles were equipped with mobile data terminals. All those terminals, you had this software called Vision Mobile. Vision Mobile is a dispatch center in itself. So all the people who, uh, were slotting calls to service straight through their terminal, they can dispatch themselves to calls and they receive that information. I've got a picture y'all showing. But, uh, that has been upgraded within the past six months to the latest version as well. So now all the callers on the road have the latest version of this MACI for, for this particular software. This is a depiction of what, uh, the, the officers are viewing in their patrol vehicles. This is just one screenshot of, um, of the multiple, um, uh, interfaces that are capable on this system. Uh, if you look over here, you'll see dispatch query, message, message center, the MACI. The message center is actually an application where they can communicate between themselves. They can communicate with the E nine one one center, uh, query courses where they obtain, uh, sensitive data, uh, through the terminal. The MACI system, uh, also updating that, uh, while I was updating this particular, uh, application. So now they have different views where they can instantly receive, uh, where they're going in different areas of town. Um, and then of course we'll go into that over the front of. As an extension of the Vision Mobile, naturally it takes mobile data terminals to use that application. So we, in the process of the twelve, past twelve to six months, we've been replacing those mobile, uh, mobile data terminals consistently. Uh, over half of those terminals have been replaced in that time period. Uh, we've gone to a newer version, a, a, one that's kind of consistent with industry standards. Um, and we specifically looked at the specifications for these, uh, that has increased memory. It has, uh, a different disk storage. So it all offers the officers a little bit more efficiency for those mobile data terminals. Uh, that means they can contain or pull up multiple applications all at the same time without having to, to minimize anything like that. Um, all of our telecommunicators are now certified through the, uh, North Carolina Sheriff's Office Training Standards Commission. Um, they had the addition to go through training, of course, and then there was a lengthy process to get them certified through sheriff's training. The only reason we opted to go through a sheriff's training was because they do not add such to the North Carolina justice.
What was that tech, please?
That took place, actually started in, uh, somewhere around mid-two thousand fourteen when the training took place. I just received final confirmation on my last dispatcher, uh, that she received her general certification last month. So it's, uh, like I said, it happens a very lengthy process to obtain a general certification. Um, we're also obligated by, uh, statute to, uh, institute a backup system for E nine one one system. We're also obligated by statute to institute a backup system for our E nine one one system. Right now, what we have in place is what we call a mic switch. For whatever reason, if our communication center goes down, we have an actual physical switch that the dispatchers can flip, and all nine one one calls will be routed directly to the Higgin County Sheriff's Office. Yes, ma'am?
Is that what happened, the nine one one?
No, ma'am. That'll be related to the radio system. This is strictly like telephone communications. But, all that traffic is going to be routed to the Higgin County Sheriff's Office. If for whatever reason that switch fails, we have a redundant plan where we can call what we call the MOX Center, and they can do it physically from their location. So that's all possible. So far as the backup itself, we are in direct communications with the Higgin County Sheriff's Office, we're looking to service each other's backup facilities. Those negotiations have already started. Town officials, Mr. Thornton, the county manager, the chief sheriff, everyone is involved and at the table on that. The plan is actually in place, the only thing we're waiting on is data from Century Lane to actually put in the dollar amounts. Again, the majority, all of this will be funded from nine one one, so that will not cause a curve in our tax.
The night switch is just a small little device that we're able to switch, and the nine one one calls themselves will be routed to the county. That's paid for by nine one one as well.
Remote services, we've also installed the ability to repair things remotely, so what's happening is I design a computer where regardless of where I'm at, I'm able to tap into the town's mainframe and the domain and making repairs that are needed. So if I'm out of town on training or whatever else, something goes down, I can immediately get in. If I'm unable to fix it, then of course our department can get it repaired. E nine projects, we're looking at AMS server, that's in essence, that's going to be something where we're organizing our Microsoft Office licensing right now. We just kind of realized that they're a little freddy, so we want to pull all those together. So our understanding that the infrastructure for this is already in place, it's just a matter of coordinating with our IT vendor to get the necessary keys for it. We're also looking at cloud disaster recovery, and that's what I was referring to earlier about those NAS devices. The NAS devices can be considered like a big external drive. That's what we have in place right now for our disaster recovery. One is located in the police department, the other is located in the fire department. That way, if we had a catastrophic failure at the police department, we still have the data saved at the fire department. In lieu of that, the only downfall to that is if we have a catastrophic failure, then we would have to acquire the equipment. We have the data saved, but we still would be down until we acquire the equipment to get back into operation. The class of disaster recovery would eliminate that. That would be something where we would be down for a maximum of two to three hours, and then virtual servers would kick us back up and would be back operational without any downtime. That is something that we're already discussing with our IT vendor, and that will be information to come out of on that in a few minutes. Police department, since we're discussing communications, we're always looking for ways to communicate with the public, so we've installed the infrastructure for communicating digitally throughout our lobby to the public, coming in and seeking different information. That is in place. The infrastructure is not the final version, there's a few more proofing processes for that. Our video storage, given the nature of climate of laws which we're in now, naturally, video is going to be a big topic. We already got the body cameras, the body cameras in place. We're working towards going back to in-car cameras as well. There's a cycle for all that, that data has to be stored, and that's where the original SAN that I was discussing comes back into play. That has sufficient disk space for us to be able to do this now. I've already got the system for body cameras network, we just have to kind of bring it back around to the SAN and introduce a little bit more of the product now. That's just a quick depiction of how it's going to go. Your end call video cameras transferred wirelessly to access points, which I've already installed. Then it's dumped to the server and saved and controlled by our workstations. Before I pass off Lieutenant Hale from radio, are there any questions about anything that I just offered? I know I rushed through it, I apologize for that.
I like the way you kept saying, okay, your body being up, maybe that's why the worst way, that's what I can't handle.
Are there any questions?
No, my answer is yes.
And I'm sure what you gave is in this document, so maybe you have a question that you'd like to share.
That's a lot more detail there, I hope it's on the screen.
Thank you, thank you, Sergeant.
Good evening. Picking back on what Sergeant Wade presented to you, kind of letting you know what he presented and why I'm getting ready to present, how good it's hand in hand, is the PSAP center is where the phone call or call for service originates, and then after that call is taken and is then transmitted by radio to the department for call for service. The majority of the stuff in the PSAP center is paid for by money from the E nine one one fund that gives us the money to pay out here, current costs, phone bills, and the equipment that we need in order to operate inside that system there. A little background on the level of data terminals that we have, the vast majority of those have been paid for by grants that were written to the government's crime commission, so the town has incurred a little cost when it comes to the mobile data systems that we have.
When were those grants?
Grants have been written all along, since, I've been writing grants since two thousand and three.
Typically it's made in its own.
And they're good at awarding money for us to buy equipment with, and we try to offset the cost of the town by using that to buy equipment that we have.
So it's been ongoing?
Yes, sir. A little bit of history about the radio system that we have now. The town turned up a call to purchase this radio system in the early nineteen nineties. At the time of the purchase, total was the first municipal to purchase an eight-hundred megahertz digital trucking radio system in the state of North Carolina. Unfortunately, during the flood of nineteen ninety-nine, as a result of hurricane and floyd, we had to replace everything at the town site, with the exception of the radio tower. When we had done this, we raised the equipment approximately fifteen feet off the ground and replaced the damaged equipment that was submerged in the water. In two thousand and twelve, approaching the end of support for our radio system, we were able to, the nine one one fund allowed us to use some money to spend out our fund balance. They wanted all our municipalities that have PSAP to put their fund balance at twenty percent, so they opened up the gates on some of this money and let us spend for other equipment needs other than just the nine one one center. We were able to purchase a firmware upgrade for this radio system that involved a little bit more time and support for making arrangements to purchase a new radio system. Components of the radio system. We had a console, the console is located in the dispatch, the dispatches work at. There's a trunk controller which is out at the radio site, a high-band fire transmitter which is out at the radio site and inside the dispatch. There are five trunk repeaters out at the radio site, there are talk groups that the main controller assigned when somebody gets rid of the talk on the radio, and the T one line. The T one line runs in between the police department and the tower and provides the connectivity between the two, and it is maintained by Century Lane. In reference to the infrastructure, the total radio system consisted of a two-position console, so we got two positions inside our dispatch, and we use for talking on the radio, which is connected to the trunk controller at the tower site by a T one line, which is maintained by Century Lane for connectivity between the two sites. There's a trunk controller at the tower site, this is the main controller. There's one high-band fire transmitter and a five-channel, and a five-channel eight-hundred megahertz trunk repeater. The console can select any one of the combination of channels or talk groups to talk to. Talk groups should be considered just like another radio channel. But you must remember that this system only has four transmitters which can be used for voice. The first one is to control the other four for the voice traffic that comes across. So if you have four people talking on the radio at the same time from other departments in the day, if a fifth person keeps up and tries to talk, they're going to get a business signal into one of those channels for free.
How often does that happen?
Very rarely, for, and when it's all up and running, four of them will be tied up.
So that's a near rate.
There are times when we have major power outages and stuff like that, you can get a business signal, but for basic day-to-day operations, it's, you know, it's suffice as our needs, you know? To better explain trucking a little bit, trucking is a system developed to best use on a limited number of radio frequencies. One radio frequency is used as a control channel, and four other radio channels and frequencies are used for voice. Each time a user talks, that control channel picks whichever other channel is not being used to let that person talk. So, you know, when the user stops talking, it starts again, and the control may switch it, it's a little different, and the next time they talk, whichever channel is free. So if you have a scanner and you place it on this one of our radio frequencies to listen to what people are saying, you would only get broken parts of that communication due to the fact that it may go to another frequency the next time you talk on it. So you may get the police department the first time on that channel, and then the next time you may hear something from the electric department or the fire department. So you wouldn't get the whole conversation, because it just assigns you whichever one free.
Mister, yeah, I, part of, you understand that I have, and I'm not saying it's an issue, I'm only saying it is a part of the issue with this situation that might have even happened, but as far as the use of this system, we have the police department, the fire department, and their campus.
The airport we got has, is on this radio.
And wouldn't we be, in your opinion, more effective, more efficient if we just had on this particular system, the police department, fire department?
Yes, sir. I think it would suffice to have the whole town on that system.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I referenced the radio system figures that we have, you know, when we first purchased the radio system, no doubt, it was the best that they made at the time. The biggest issue that we've had over the years since we've had it is the connectivity with the T one line, and the T one line actually has nothing to do with the radio system itself, it just provides connectivity between the police department and the tower site. When those issues happen with the T one line, we have to call Century Lane, and they come in and fix it, but it would never down for a long period of time, it doesn't take long for them to get it back up and working. And in the effect, when that happens, it only knocks the console of all that the dispatch is using, so they're able to take a portable radio that's in the dispatch and talk to the officer on the radio. It's only stopped the communication between the console and the tower site, not the portable, that. Other issues that we've had over the years is just due to Mother Nature. We've had lightning strikes and hit the tower out there and fried the equipment, you know, but fortunately, the radio maintenance person that we use, Marazan, now, he's here in town. He's just down the main street about a mile or so, and he's always quick to come out and respond and fix these issues when we have them. I have never not called him that he didn't respond promptly and get our system back up The thing we're running into now is that the system is out of support for Motorola, because it's at the end of life. So in other words, Motorola doesn't produce any more parts for this radio system that we have. The city of Rocky Mount has the identical system that we have, and they are in the process of replacing their system at this time. And I've been in talks with the gentleman that's in charge of that radio system, and what they're going to do with their oven is they're going to place it in storage room that's open and is up and running, and he's told me that if we need any parts, and you can hold that slide right there, if we can get any parts that we may need that they have, of course, we're going to have to pay for them, but there's some parts available from their system if we need to repair items.
Do you mean time before we get there? Get a new system up, what are we going to do for parts here at any time?
Well, there's other municipalities around the state that have the same radio system, so the gentleman at the other name, he knows where that at. Matter of fact, back in the summer, we had a lightning strike at the police department that fried a board, he wanted the service, and he found a part found in Fayetteville to fix it. And so he has resources that he can recap to, also to try and find the parts that we need to repair.
And how much would they leave us at to get that system repaired?
Well, you have that sort of.
You have a little lightning strike and it fried a store.
Right. Well, that, that, this incident there, only one console was down, because it was only effective one, so we had the other that was up and working, and it was down for about a day or so, he kind of come around and get the parts back here and back up in a day.
But, there is some guarantee that part is out there.
No, we don't guarantee.
You can find that part in mid-break time.
Until Rocky Mount finishes there.
Let me ask you this, how long has that system been out there, since they've stopped making the parts?
At the end of the firmware, the support run out at the end of the firmware, when we called that two thousand and twelve, it bought us extra time on the support.
December of twenty fifteen.
That's what we, yes, we discussed it, yes. It was actually put in place in, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and twelve, although I think we ended up being in one somewhere around July of two thousand and twelve, I think it completely worked.
Okay, so my, my understanding, like, two thousand and twelve, they quit making the parts for this particular system?
They quit making them then, we did a firmware upgrade and buy extra support, because we upgraded what we had at the time. But there is no other upgrades out there, it's just at the end of life.
But, when that software was bought, we can use right then, we can have a radio.
We knew that we had a certain amount of time.
System that we couldn't fix if we needed to.
Well, we knew we had a certain amount of time before the support would run out.
But now, we're in a position that if other people can take a step and get a new system, Rocky Mount wouldn't be enough to get it bought, we'd be basically out of radio.
If it failed, yes. Let's see. To address what happened on February the sixth, thank you, with the, this is, matter of fact, this is the start of the tower, the equipment right at the tower, the elevator. The big cabinet is the trunk controller, and the four smaller ones, the rest of the little bit are the repeaters, okay?
What I heard you saying was that Rocky Mount would make it more convenient for them to get the parts, but those parts are always, were existing in other cities as well.
Some, some cities, some of them have.
Yeah, some cities, but Rocky Mount actually make it more convenient available for them to kind of help.
Right, due to the fact that our system's already done. Right.
So.
A long before Rocky Mount, new system's up.
They're in the process now of installing all that stuff, I don't know what the timeline is on that, but it'll be soon.
And occasionally, they wouldn't be able to keep their system.
Oh, yeah, because they're still operating all their old one right now, yeah.
But that, that serves a purpose, that, that, they have the same issue we have. We're all the same above here. Anybody who is not upgrading to the new system is in the same situation. So they're slightly ahead of us with proposing the upgrade because of the extension, of course, but we're already proposing the same plan to the council as well.
Let me ask more, if we need a new system, what would we have to? There's old system that we have, is it being used for us anymore? Can they be a backup, backup?
Well, what would happen with what we have in place is, this equipment here, like the main controller and the trunk, uh, the controls would have to be replaced. The consoles at the police department would have to be replaced. The improvement in this is, and I was, had this after our finish this year, but since you asked a question, I couldn't answer it, we're P twenty-five capable, which is interoperability, so we can talk to other agencies in case up to Michael Ford had it again, and we have people coming into assistance. The good thing about putting in the new system is we'll be able to eliminate the T one line that's maintained by Century Lane, because we now have five of them out at the radio tower site. So we would use our five of them as a connectivity between the two entities, the police department and the tower site, and that would be less likely to have those issues that we had with the T one line of the week in the past.
Look at it.
Yes, sir.
Why were you always not backed up by the body services?
That's, I was headed there. The failure that we had on February the sixteenth was multiple failures in the other three trunks that were, that were working. And he was able to use the one trunk that was down and pull parts from that and repair the other three. They're all up and working fine today, just like they were before this incident. In two thousand and eight, the highway patrol came to the town tower and wanted some available tower site, tower space that we had at our tower site to install their Viper network. And their Viper network is statewide, and it allows some statewide connectivity. And in exchange, was giving them that tower space, they gave us three talk groups. There's one for police, there's one for fire, and there is an event channel that we have, the electric department radio program, so that they can talk on. So in the event of something like this happens again, the protocol that we put in place with our portals was to switch over to the Viper system and be able to communicate one of via the Viper system. The only thing that we lose is the ability to call out the volunteers, because we don't have that connectivity between the console and the tower site. But the Viper system is there, of course, and that's the protocol that we're using in the future until we're able to remedy the issue of replacing this radio system that we have.
So the Viper system is used a daily shooting at them?
No, it was not. We were in the process of getting it done, because we realized, we want to stay in all that to go down, we never had that happen. But we did get some radios up on Viper, so we were able to talk, and. And by the time we got it in place, he was up and running, the whole system back online. So we just switched back to what we had. Right.
So this thing went on down for a short period of time, contrary to probably, it wasn't down very long. And while this was going on, we had a dispatcher still dealing with that, and more calls coming in. So there, there are multiple people, including myself when I was out in the field. And the PSAP worker tried to get to dispatch to ensure that she has a second person working with her as well. So it was a very chaotic scene, it's, it's a lot of moving components in this. And this happens almost every time we have a, a hot scene. You're going to have a lot of moving parts and moving components and people, people go to work, they go to the specialty. So people went, they did what they had to do to make sure that they were going to send it in.
The, the federal standards that are put in place now on purchasing a new radio system is that P twenty-five standard that I've given you in the handout that I've typed up. And basically what that means is the ability to have interoperability between multiple agencies of the radio system. It's, it's the standards that have been accepted on a federal level and you can't buy a radio system used for public service like we're getting ready to do without being P twenty-five equipped.
Two things, based on an email that we received tonight, town manager made aware in two thousand and twelve that the radio system. It's a problem.
No, sir. Wait a minute, I have a question, ask a question.
I just did.
No, you made a statement.
Did, did you not send an email to the town manager to discuss the radio system in two thousand and twelve? We got it here in our back.
Let's read it.
Oh, 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 no, 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 no. We're not going to do that. We're going to let Lieutenant Hale finish his presentation.
Well, I'm asking him a question.
That question has been asked and answered, sir. Lieutenant Hale, would you please?
No, it hasn't.
Lieutenant Hale, answer the question.
The next question is this. We have let ourselves get in a position that we're now accepting huge parts to try to sustain a town left out of people that need to have an upscale, updated radio system that was not planned for when it should, is that what you're aware of?
It wasn't put in a capital outlay body to be able to replace it at the end of support. And we, we did have to, I mean, we did have to realize the fact that using parts from another municipality, but they are out there to, to help us keep ours up and running, should we do it. That's, that's the difference we have to get, if we do it.
I'm going to make this one.